Realty.
I make a motion that we continue that public hearing until March 14th.
At seven forty-five?
Yep. All right. We are, yeah. And all in favor? Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
It's already seven thirty, so we're already twenty-eight minutes ahead of schedule.
We are flying.
It's already seven thirty.
All right, let's get stuff done. We got the review of the draft, approval letter for the senior center.
Can I tell you something?
Microsoft Word, every single time I edit this document, it takes away the sale. And I put it back every time, and when I open it again, it's gone.
That's why we give it. I usually send the things to Melanie, and she takes care of it. So it turns out when we were drafting that, I realized that we didn't vote on it being a stormwater. Because under the site plan review, or under the town's general bylaw, Article 23, I think it is, stormwater authority in the town is the DPW and the building inspector unless it's a site plan review, and then it goes to the planning board, so we have to do stormwater stuff. So we reviewed stormwater, we just never voted that it was a stormwater permit. If people have questions on that, or concerns with the senior center stormwater design.
Did they have to give us another piece of paper to indicate they were applying for a stormwater management approval?
No. No, they submitted all the stormwater paperwork. That's one thing that as I was looking at this, I wanted to revise the applications. We have to look at the applications and have like checkbox.
Checkbox waivers?
Checkbox, checkbox for site, because site plan review, we, site plan review, we end up being, site plan review can be used for just the standard site plan review stuff, or a site plan review special permit, or if the planning board is the special permit granting authority under the zoning. All uses site plan review. So I wanted to put checkboxes so that when they submit the application under site plan review, that it's for whatever the items are. So that it makes it easier to fill out the.
Okay.
And that we do the right things during our hearing.
Did we waive wetland or stormwater?
No.
They didn't ask for a waiver?
No, they met it.
They met it, and then, and is it in, I didn't read the draft?
Yeah.
The draft should be your second page. She's right on top of it. Second page.
Yeah, if this was delivered, then maybe.
If it were delivered, but those days are gone.
It was delivered to Mark. Only Mark.
No. Was that what that was?
You can drop it off on your way behind. Right outside 140.
The papers and delivers.
Don't go after tonight, Mark. You better watch out.
Nice. All right, so that was included so that we added in on the front page that it's a stormwater management approval.
Okay.
And we voted at this meeting that we voted to approve it under the stormwater bylaws.
Does it say that?
Approve the stormwater management plan for February 20.
For the blue, okay.
Meeting, yes. So that was.
She already did that?
No, we're waiting. I just, I'm reviewing. What we did was we continued the other public hearing. The definitive subdivision while you were out. We continued it.
I was up for five minutes.
Work fast.
Can I ask a question? I did not look on the website today, the same website to know how the voting went yesterday?
Yes.
It was a yes yesterday?
It was a yes.
Not by much.
Six hundred, six hundred to five hundred. But can we do this?
Yeah, yeah, only be, yeah, no, only because if it doesn't pass, then this is a moot point. It was my question.
Well, no, I still think, if it doesn't pass, it'll come back again.
Okay.
It's still the same site plan. They may reduce the scale of the building and save some money.
But re, but review it now?
Right.
In case.
Well, in any event, it's a valid permit. The fact that they don't execute it is not our fault.
And then we can amend it if we, it could be an amended site plan.
And that's why I was asking that question.
Good question. Oh, that's good.
Okay.
So how did we?
I just, I know, I took off my jacket. It's rarer than I'm warm.
So you said we continued a meeting that we closed?
No.
No, West Wilson Circle.
The West Wilson Circle.
Oh, oh, okay.
That on the agenda. The first item on the agenda was a public hearing.
Oh, all right, so that one you continue?
We continued that with no discussion, nothing, so that everyone, even though Raj is not here, he'll still be able to be involved in the next one.
Because there, everybody's at numbers.
Right.
So then on this one, how are we doing this?
So now we are just voting on this to approve it, considering it to be approved in the stormwater management plan.
Even though it's not in the, we don't have a.
We didn't vote to approve it. We kind of approved the stormwater. We got all the applications.
Yeah, we got all the information. I mean, I was.
But we never took a vote to approve it under the stormwater, approve the stormwater management plan.
So we're not reopening or anything?
Nope, no, we just have to vote to approve the stormwater management plan tonight.
From what I recall, do you have any concerns about it?
Yeah, no, we looked at it, and it was.
We asked a lot of questions about it, and it seemed like it was, it was kind of simplistic and wonderful in that.
It was very simplistic, yeah, it was simplistic, so I would, can I move that we, yeah, can I move that we vote for the stormwater management plan?
To approve the stormwater management plan?
Yeah.
For the West Wilson Senior Center?
Yes, that's what I would like to move.
That sounds good.
Second?
Two seconds.
Two seconds?
You said you seconded first. A second, you said, you seconded a second before I did.
I think you did. I think Mark did.
So yours was a third?
Yeah, it's around and around again. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, all right. So now we just have to, do you have an executable copy of this?
Now, is that separate from the senior center in sign?
Yeah, I'm not sure what, oh, in sign, not the sign.
Oh, oh.
So we're going to review the letter and sign the letter.
Sign the letter. Gotcha.
Do you want me to go back and try to fix this right now?
Yes, because we're going to be doing the comprehensive master plan discussions. That'll give you a couple of minutes. Well, we can. Sure.
Just put the darn logo back.
I might go through if you guys are, I just don't want to.
Well, no, actually.
We'll stop with this, if you vote on it, and I'll just go when we start talking about the other thing.
What's the Saint Pierre A and R?
They never came. I called her, I, they called her and asked her.
That's for the.
Put it on. Best to put it on, because I said we're not accepting anything.
Day of.
No more. I said it was not in my Wednesday close business. I said it's not going to be on the agenda. No, no, we can't do it. So she says, we don't know for sure if it's going to be ready, so I felt put it on for you. Rather have it on, and you show up, then show up and not be on. I said we won't hear anything.
Okay. I was gonna say, if we're signing an A and R, you can go off and do it while we're doing the signatures.
But no, so she didn't, didn't call, and it wasn't obviously ready.
All right, well, we can do that. We can just sign it when we're done. I don't think these are going to take very long, so let's cover the comprehensive master plan stuff.
You guys will talk about that, and we'll just include it.
Well, I don't know that it's going to be very long. Is it going to be long, Cheryl?
No.
I thought it was a little work to this than that, otherwise I would have had it written.
No, let me get back to. So, yeah, I think you're on it. Do you want me to talk about it now?
Yep, we're ready for it.
So, there is a quorum for a meeting of the town line planning committee for next Tuesday, the sixth. And at that meeting, she wants to basically talk about the next steps. My difficulty is, to be honest with you, that I am, okay, it was to review draft minutes, discuss feedback received from January 22 public forum, next steps regarding the draft chapters, and enhance inclusion of the necessary boards and committees. I am on a committee to hire the next principal in my building, so I told her that it wasn't guaranteed that I could be there that night. So that's, that's the only problem, but that's what they're doing.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Actually, my wife might not be teaching that night, so it's possible. I can go.
Yes, Tuesday night at seven.
You're on.
Well, I don't know if I'm.
So it's really for the feedback and next steps regarding the draft chapters.
And it'll be, so if I go, it'll be the same, same old story of what next, what chapters, what are we trying to do? What's the purpose and the plan?
Right, right.
Sure, okay.
Cheryl.
Why don't we send Raj? He's not here. We can send him.
Well, he'll be there. If I can't go, Raj will attend. Yes.
Okay.
He would?
He will now.
He will now? He's not here.
If he doesn't have another three meetings going on.
What?
Yeah.
Okay.
You need to clone him.
Yeah, when she asked about it, I thought I was available, and I said, I'm sorry. Work comes first, work comes first for a volunteer job.
Yeah, that's all right.
What do I get paid for? It becomes before I volunteer.
They even pay you. How much do we pay her?
I haven't received my dollar yet.
I gave her my dollar.
I never get a dollar.
I never got a dollar.
I never get a dollar.
I haven't seen it.
I've been on for four years.
Oh.
You pay only like twenty.
You get a dollar after you've served your year?
I don't know when.
Yes, just to mention this ticket out.
I was waiting for twenty bucks.
They don't want to go wasting dollars all.
Maybe we could pull it all together and have some appetizers or something.
I see great freshments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, let's, before this degrades to something I don't want on TV.
Or on TV?
We've got, we're being taped, just.
Is it on TV, or is it just?
Okay, we're on to the reports for our boards. Any other reports from other boards?
No, I got nothing.
Haven't had anything since last month.
There's a transportation meeting on a week from tomorrow.
Yeah, that's, actually, some transportation got a bunch of money, or the complete streets got funded.
Yeah, all of a sudden, right?
Right, and then there was something about Crescent Street sidewalks. What is the Crescent Street sidewalks project? I thought they did that already. Because I thought the next step they were going to do is.
Didn't they rebuild the sidewalk up to the high school? Is that what they're talking about, or are they talking about farther up?
I don't know. I don't.
Removed.
It was, I guess, the email said something about, we got notification that we were approved for, that was like a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars for the listed projects, and then it goes down.
Who was the first couple of projects?
No, it, it just went down to this number nine, I think it was, and then Crescent Street sidewalks. You have that? Well, but it's generally, that's, I don't, that's all I know, and it doesn't tell us anything. So when you meet, ask what the project is.
See if you can get Cheryl an extra dollar.
We want to try to prioritize that work and also get things.
We want to prioritize that work?
Well, no, we want to prioritize, I would like to prioritize Goodell Park, or Goodell Street sidewalk.
Since there isn't any, yeah.
Yeah, right by the tennis court.
Up the hill, you mean?
Dies, yeah.
Yeah, up the hill.
So that whole section there, because people are walking and everyone's flying up the road.
Yeah.
So that's a priority, but I don't know how they set their priorities. What I heard when they were doing the complete streets was, we make a list of thirty or eighteen, or whatever the number was, projects, and then they say whether we're funded, and then we pick which ones we want to use. I don't know.
Well, I think they were in some order.
Did we have a list, didn't we have a list, and then we got money to do up to there, and then?
I don't know how it goes. Those are the questions to ask, but it would make sense.
On Thursday, week from tomorrow.
Okay, great. And ask what the status is on the traffic evaluation for the triangle, Route 140, Route 12, and Franklin Street.
Because you think we have enough data and?
Well, I was told we had enough data two years ago. They just needed to follow through and do it. And it might be outdated data now.
I always want to know, but why we don't buy sensors, like just the town buys sensors and take our own data? Like the, like these, the speeds, speed signs that the police department? That logs the number of cars that goes by also, and their speed. We don't really care about their speed, but how many cars go by, I mean.
Oh, I didn't realize it logged.
Does it collect that data?
Yeah, I mean, it's all on a USB or something, because it has some data logging.
Would you want to talk to the police chief and ask if we can install someone?
I think we only have one, and there's, what they do is they put the bracket up and they move it from place to place.
What you do is you put the sensors out and put the rubber, the rubber, you know.
Well, this is like a sonar kind of thing.
But you put them in multiple places at the same time, that's the thing, so, you know, that's.
So you can see how many people go from this road to that road.
Right.
I mean, if these things aren't expensive, I don't, rather than, not wasting time, but CMRPC having to figure out that they want to spend time in town doing this.
They mentioned, they mentioned the springtime, not the winter. They don't put them out in the wintertime.
And they only have so many, they only have so many of the pieces of equipment also.
Right, but we've missed three springs, or two springs anyway.
Yeah.
And.
When do you think?
Right, but we need someone who's got a background in traffic to say, once we have, let's say we have a hundred and fifty cars going by, is that high, is it low, is it average?
Well, how about this, is if we had all this data, then we give that to CMRPC and say, hey, give us a report.
We have CMRPC data that lists even which, how many people take a left turn, go straight, or go right at all those intersections, and I don't know when that was taken either, but there's a, I have this much stuff at home about.
Yes.
All that.
A lot of that was done, and that's why, let's kind of make it work. I mean, it's, it kind of, I think it was in November of 2015, I drafted a letter to CMRPC about this, and it specified the issues we had with the Route 12, 140 intersection, where you can't make a right turn coming south on Route 12. You can't make a left turn very well going north on Route 140. Route 140 backs up to the railroad tracks, I mean.
Well, last night with the voting and everything, and.
Oh, it was backed up way.
It was down to the dump, you know?
Yes, yes, yes.
Ruto's wife called him and said, I'm in traffic at the solar panels. You know, I mean, it was that far back last night.
I was in that, or, actually, that was, yeah, like 4:30, I was in that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
She was about five-ish or something like that, you know, coming into boat, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
But I mean, I, I think a study of right there would be interesting if, if we could readjust the lights or whatever. I mean, what's going on with these?
The lights, the lights are pretty fast as they are. Those are, those are some of the most efficient traffic lights I've ever seen.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't let much time go by with nobody coming. As soon as there's nobody coming, it flips, it flips the other way. There's just not a lot of capacity, especially because the lanes are narrow and they're all wobbly. Now, I don't know, I don't know about Mass DOT, whether they have any requirements of how recent that data has to be before they act on something, so I have no idea how much that limit is.
That's, that's all we have a transportation committee. That's one they got us for.
And ask CMRPC, I mean, we have their time, I mean, you can ask them our questions too, and they don't, I don't think they use our time for answering questions of.
The guy that comes out, the guy that comes out is very helpful. And there's a whole Route 140 study from, from, maybe it's Route 2, all the way down to Grafton, wherever 140 goes, you know, so.
And a lot of the projects on 140 have been resurfaced and rebuilt.
Yeah, wait till they start rebuilding the bridge at 290. And read the bridge over 290, the 140 bridge over 290. It's going to be rebuilt.
140 over 290? I thought 140 was 290.
140 goes under 290. Oh, no, it's over. Under 190. No, it goes over, right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, where they're, where they're building the FedEx building.
Oh, into Shrewsbury, oh, okay.
Yeah, Shrewsbury, and it's over the line in Shrewsbury.
Yes.
They're going to redo that bridge, and of course, there's going to be traffic changes due to the FedEx building going up.
Oh, are they changing the bridge for FedEx?
No.
Traffic, yeah.
Oh, really?
That's what they're saying, yeah.
I heard they were going to narrow the bridge to make it not a huge.
Yeah, I don't know if they're going to.
Speed thing. They're going to, they're going to try to calm it down, so you don't have people whipping off the highway at a high rate of speed.
Oh, really? Because right now, it's kind of a weird situation where it's one lane coming into it, it gets to two lanes just over the bridge, and it goes back down to one lane.
Right, so they're going to.
They're going to make that, pull in the drive, a right turn only.
Right.
You cannot go across the left anymore, that's the problem.
Oh, that's a good idea.
That's a nasty intersection.
Go down another road, that's closed off. That's definitely gone.
Oh, is it going to be gone? That's good, because there's accidents there all the time.
All right, so, so, traffic is, transportation is a busy committee.
It's a busy, well, that's sort of funny, that's what traffic is.
Great, very good.
Who's still on the committee?
Who's, he's our committee member.
I am a new.
Our committee member, but who else is?
Larry, is that guy Larry?
Larry Solaker, yeah.
And the chairman's name.
Butch?
Yeah, chair.
Chairman.
The chairman, and Ann's there too, but.
Larry's not the chair anymore?
No.
Okay, well, that's good. He didn't really want to be. But is DPW Butch on it too?
Well, yeah, sometimes.
Okay.
Not every time.
Okay.
Last meeting, there were only three of us.
And Anita usually attends, right?
Yeah, that's what I meant, Anita, yeah.
Yes.
But she wasn't there, so there was just three of us last time.
Should have gotten her in, you know? Should have voted on everything, pushed all three of them.
I went, I went to one of the meetings back when I was on the committee, and they showed up, and I said, Butch, there's a sinkhole or something on 140 down, you know, past the train tracks.
And he ran right down?
Where the, well, it was where the, there was a water main or a water pipe break, and they filled it, you know, and paved over it, and it sunk. And I mentioned it to him, the next day, his people went out and fixed it, and I, and I went to the next meeting, I said, That's awesome that you were able to, you know, that you did that just right away. He's like, oh, we did? You know, it's kind of funny, because, you know, he just mentioned it to his, his guys, and they just snapped, jumped on it and fixed it. It was good.
Yeah.
So take a bet.
Yeah, he usually does pretty well, yeah. When you let him know something he's doing, he's, he's been good with that.
Yeah, well, he's good.
That's good. All right, any other board reports?
I have an idea.
We're trying to get the, what is it, the permitting chair meeting for building permitting, like the chair, chair of the planning board, chair of the ZBA, chair of the conservation commission, chair of, so we're, we're meeting once a month or so, and we're trying to schedule this, now scheduled for March 21st, so.
Anita still have her staff meetings?
First Wednesday of the month, I think.
Has anybody been going from now?
Yeah, you were supposed to go.
I haven't gone in like a year, I think.
No, actually, I haven't seen anything. I hear that they still meet, but I don't know that. I tried to make it so that if things were, there were issues with the planning board, that we had to attend.
That we would find out.
Let us know, but I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
Wednesday I wouldn't schedule, but March what?
March 21st. Wednesday.
Is there a name for that committee?
Permitting chairs, I think is what you're calling it.
Permitting chair.
Permitting chairs sounds like you're like, you know, no, that's a good one, no.
I think we have too many, I think.
Fifteen chairs.
It, it's room, plane, review if you have more than fifteen chairs.
What's that?
Cheryl, she wants.
Yeah.
All right, so I think we don't have, why don't we go over minutes?
We have citizen comments about that.
We don't have any citizens, so we don't have any citizens' comments.
Do you want to be a citizen?
About the sign at 92 North Main.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Someone speaking up about it?
I talked to Raj about that yesterday.
I do have a comment about that.
At the, at the parking lot of the church.
Oh, the elections, during elections?
Yeah.
What did he have to say?
Well, just that, you know, 51B and ZBA did it, it was not in our bailiwick, and.
Yeah, but I don't know that this, ZBA didn't, I didn't see it in ZBA's permit to allow them to have a sign in a single residence district. So if it's not in their permit, they don't get to have it. And if they have it in the permit, then show it to us that this is what was waived. And if it wasn't waived in the permit, they have to follow all the standards, which I think is twenty square feet.
Do they have to take it down?
I would say so, but that's up to the building inspector. That's why it's a number, whatever it is, on my list of stuff to the building inspector from last November.
It's too big.
It's too bright.
Yeah.
I'm not talking about regulations, I'm just saying, in real life, it's too big and it's too bright.
I was going to suggest that it's, it's the only, I think, actually, it's the only big backlit sign, except maybe the ski shop here. Should we prevent backlit signs?
There was another backlit sign.
Well, they're allowed. It's just that there's a certain minimum requirement.
Oh, yeah, okay, you want to, should we go with that? Okay.
Make them figure out.
If that sign were on Route 12, I think it would still look pretty big, but it wouldn't look so bright, because Route 12 is.
No, he did. He put up my pictures.
Yeah. Well, but the other thing is, I'm not sure it's ten feet off the property line.
I did not.
It's ten feet, I'm sorry, ten feet.
It has to be ten feet inside the property.
I didn't measure that. I measured the sign.
It's very close to the road.
It is, it is close to the road. I didn't, I should have measured that, but when you're approaching it, it looks like you're approaching Vegas.
But it's, it's an apartment complex.
I know, right.
It's not a high, it's not a high-traffic, it's not a, there's not a need for a high-traffic sign where people, oh, that's where it is.
There isn't.
Plus, plus the name of the place is the address, so.
Disturbing the neighbors, to be honest with you, because I know.
Well, I wouldn't want to live next to it.
I know a few of the neighbors, and they say it's like.
It's like having the sun, yeah.
It is. Actually, somebody says that it keeps them up at night, because it's so bright. Between that and the lamps that they use are so bright going up their driveway, it's much brighter than anything you'd use in town.
But their illumination, maybe there isn't an illumination, because they're not supposed to have their light spill off of their property.
It's so bright that it's spilling off, like it, it goes downward, so if you look at it, it, it does go downward, but it's so bright that it's, there's everywhere.
So can we draft something to ask them to be in compliance with the sign bylaws, as well as the lighting bylaws? Because the lighting standard says you can't have more than, I think it's like.
It's like a half candle.
Four candle power on your property.
There is a boatload of lights up that driveway. Then there's a boatload of lights up, shining into the neighbors' backyards.
Oh, yeah, because it's lighting up there, the driveway up there, yeah.
Well, by the, on the, on the building, on the backside of the building.
Who do you want to address it to?
Lights in the backside of the building.
The building inspector, the zoning enforcement officer.
And copy the ZBA, because they're involved.
Well, why don't you draft something, and then we'll take a look at it, and you can send it. Is that what the board?
Yeah.
Seems like a bunch of people know, right?
I think, I think you should.
Well, the pictures, they speak for it.
My, my comment was more general, that maybe backlit signs that are that bright should be prevented, or, just backlit signs.
Backlit sign, yeah, well, who, who has, well.
The only other backlit sign was over here at the, yeah, and it's new. I don't even know if it's permanent.
I thought I saw another backlit sign somewhere.
Is there?
A lot of towns don't let them.
I don't remember. I mean, usually they have, it, the, the sort of, I don't know, rustic look of the electric lights shining down on them.
I mean, this is so bright, it's as bright as the seafood.
The, their active sign.
Yeah, their active sign, like when they.
Do we want to make a list of different signs for the building inspector to investigate?
Yeah. So.
Also seafood.
I mean, that was one that jumps out at me that I know of, is those places in seafood.
I think they made.
Somebody must have made a comment.
But there must be, for those signs, there must be a nighttime setting and a daytime setting.
There should be.
Because you can't use the same brightness at night as you can in the daytime. But it's enough to be distracting, and that's the thing. If you're driving along, it really is distracting.
Would, uh, would requests respectfully request?
I can't think of any other signs that I notice are annoying.
A review of... Right, we write the following.
In my head, I'm driving down the street, and I don't think of it.
And any issue associated with it. Yeah, and, um, what else was there? Saw a couple of those. A long pole with a flag, like the sale, sale signs.
Oh, with the, with the triangular banners, right?
Yeah, the banners that hang up, and it's a big sale that has whatever.
It's kind of like a fin, or a fern, sticks out, but it's got all sorts of...
How about those pencil-like geek things?
Yes, those are illegal. Inflatable signs, no way.
Like, I was thinking of Ernie's Car Wash. Yeah, right across from, um, Ernie's Car Wash. Is it Ernie's? That's the car wash in town by Walmart.
That's on Ernie's Street.
Across the street is Walmart.
Well, yeah, Walmart, it is Ernie's.
It is.
So, in, in the Walmart parking lot, there was some tax place that has one of the big signs up now.
Is there a tax place in the mall, in the bottom there?
I think so.
Or is it the one that they open in Walmart temporarily?
Oh, I don't know.
Oh, maybe.
But it's, there's a sign that says it. And it's a non-compliance sign. And then actually, down in that area, I was looking at the, uh, the cones to divide the entrance in and out.
The Rain-X tires.
Yeah, the Rain-X tires, that's advertising on a sign that is not allowed.
Although I think if, they are, I think it's good that they're there.
They need something there, but they can't advertise on it.
Is that true?
Which one? Where is that?
They're not supposed to. At the, at the car wash. So, to divide the entrance and exit sides of the...
Yeah, 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 that's good.
We actually, when we approved that, we said we wanted to have an island, but they said, "Oh, no, it's too hard to plow, it's too difficult to deal with." We'll make sure that there are either pylons or something there that's going to work, and then they put this advertising for Rain-X up.
So, just because they got them for free, I don't think they probably care about Rain-X, they just, they've got the thing.
Right. But those have been there for years, I think.
Do I have to put it on there?
They're probably grandfathered by now.
Uh, don't connect grandfathering.
What was the other sign besides 92 North Main Street? Walmart.
Was it supposed to seafood?
Was supposed to seafood, 92 North Main Street, and, well, this guy over here, the ski shop, has fixed his sign. It's not bright anymore. The, the, the active copy. Yeah.
The electronic, electronic sign?
Yeah, he's turned it down. It used to be, that used to be blinding, but he's fixed it.
That's all we need is some of the distraction at Franklin Street.
Exactly.
Yes. All right, so we have that, um...
But I think those are the...
When you read this, can I just ask a question about the signs? When I read, like, multifamily development, if we call it a multifamily development, it's not allowed in single residence districts. So, signs are not allowed in single residence district, even though it is a multifamily development?
Well, no, a multifamily development isn't allowed in a single residence district by...
The development is not allowed, okay.
Right.
Gotcha. Because I wasn't sure if it meant that the sign wasn't allowed, or a multifamily development is not allowed in a, in a residential district, because we have now, what would you call that? Residential development?
Well, this...
Well, but it's a ZBA 40B.
It's a residential development greater than three, three buildings.
Okay.
But either way, let's say...
It's not to exceed 20 square feet.
20 square feet is the standard.
Right.
And even because they do have a multifamily development in a single residence district, because they got the 40B approval, so they got the zoning change, so the sign would be able to be placed there, but...
But it has to be approved.
Can't be a 600-square-foot sign. It's got to meet the standard under...
Eight million lumens.
Yes, it has to meet the standard of the sign bylaws unless they got a waiver from those. And if they didn't get a waiver from them, it's not, oh, you're allowed to have a sign, so you could have any kind of a sign you want. No, you were allowed to have a sign, even though they're not allowed in that district.
So, they would, they would have needed a waiver from the ZBA for a sign, and then additional waiver for a larger sign?
Yeah.
It could be one big waiver.
Or they would need an additional waiver for anything that doesn't meet the current sign bylaws for that use.
So, I mean, if, if their permit doesn't say anything, then they're not allowed to have a sign, if it doesn't talk about a sign.
Right, right. If it doesn't grant them a sign, a sign is not allowed in single residence.
Then zoning applies, and it's not allowed.
But those are the things we need the building inspector to enforce. He's been out to that site 100 times, and I get, I assume that he approved the permit, because they had to submit a permit for this sign.
Well, or they used, it's written in the 40B permit, which one or the other.
He still has to issue a sign permit.
Oh, even if it's approved some other way?
He has to issue a building permit.
Oh, for that sign.
Well, no, he has to issue a building permit for the buildings, and the electrical and the plumbing, he still does the permitting that way, so that when they, when they need to do a permit for a sign, they still have to submit for it.
Is it free, or we're not going?
No, I don't think so.
All right, and what's the lumens?
All right, so work on that. Um, any other things, or do you need more, Cheryl?
Um...
Just reference the section.
Right, I did, I, I, um, quoted.
What is it?
The actual, um...
The permit journey?
Damn. But I just have to find the lumens.
Yeah, I was, it's easier for me to look at electronic versions and stand for it.
Oh, you want that?
No, I won't need it now, but we can draft that letter, we don't have to be doing it at the meeting.
Yeah, but we do, like, my letters would come better if we...
Your letter has to go out.
I know it has to go out.
Where is it? What's the status? So, why can't, why can't you just email?
Oh, I have to finish it.
This is the Saravian letter from September?
It was before that, I think.
It needs to go out before the next meeting. It's got to get done.
All right.
Because now is the time he's going to get all cranked up.
He's going to start working, yeah.
So...
Ah, all right.
You can stay late here and work on that.
I'd go on my laptop, that would be ideal, if we could work during the meeting.
Get attention after the planning board meeting and work on that. All right, um, any other citizens' comments? So, let's review the minutes of the last meeting, and then whatever others.
Wouldn't you say that's an alarming sign?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure, the only reason why I'm doing this is to make sure that I have it correct. 106.
What's this?
89.
Cheryl Kitty, where's Cheryl Kitty?
What's that?
1670 Newton Street? Oh, this is, oh, 1670.
I didn't know about 1680.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just got that. All right. We got, we just got that, we just got the stuff from the ZBA, so I was going to do that at our next meeting.
Are you going to move this list, or are we going to...
Um, I wasn't sure if people had, this was more the permitting list. So, people have additions, questions, comments, changes?
Has it changed?
I'm waiting to find out if there's been anything done on it, but I haven't seen anything. We did get our visit from the Flag RV folks last August.
Oh, yes.
And then they were going to get back to us, and I haven't seen anything, so...
That was the visit, all right.
Right. So, I hope we're going to talk about this at the sheet, the permitting chair's meeting. Well, I hope so. It never seems to make it on the agenda, but they want to clear, clean this all up, was the issue, and...
Oh, that one?
Yes, that's what they want.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I saw that.
So...
Oh, that's why this is out. Okay.
Which?
The Cheryl Kitty note. In 2015, the planning board approved separation?
No, that's a different one. That's a new issue.
Okay.
Oh, can we go over the minutes? The special meeting minutes on February 9th?
Oh, right, yeah, the special meeting, yeah.
Did you correct whatever errors I had? Melanie, there was something you said. Where did you get this?
Yeah, that was the, the name of the plan.
Okay. All right, so you got it right.
Oh, okay, this is the E and R, okay.
Good, perfect. So, do we have a motion to approve the minutes for February 9th special meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for February 9th special meeting. Special meeting.
Chair, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And for February 14th meeting minutes?
I make a motion to approve the February 14th meeting minutes.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, uh, February 14th public hearing?
I'm on a roll. I'm going to make a motion to approve the public hearing meeting minutes on the senior center on, um, that occurred February 14th, 2018.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Why is the header different?
Why is the header different?
Yeah.
Melanie was in a different mood with each one.
No, it's the same on these two.
Oh, maybe one is, if one is the special...
Oh, you were on.
The special meeting is mine, so that's why.
The special meeting matches public hearing meeting minutes, but it doesn't match.
Let's see which, let's see which one matches your letter when we actually get it.
Okay. I'm just wondering why they're different.
I have no idea.
Public shaming.
Right. That'll work.
All right, um...
I have to turn the computer on, it takes a while if you want me to go fix this.
Okay, if you would, please. Now, we just have to sign...
Oh, this is ZBA.
Oh, this is, I just have to sign the timesheet.
Yeah.
All right.
What, what do we got with the Cheryl Kitty thing?
She asked, that's the Newton Street stuff. Um, somewhere I pulled out, did you look at, you read it already?
I read it.
No, but I, now I recall.
I recall.
Oh, good. So, the situation is, is that the building inspector is questioning what went on for the 68 and 70 Newton Street?
Yep.
Yeah.
And he's not happy that we issued a, a sign on the plan?
Yeah.
Um, I was going to reply to him and let him know that we were required, if you'll read the meeting minutes from that date?
I've not read the meeting minutes, though.
I went and dug them out for Newton Street. Uh, Mr. Thunberg, John Toomey, and their attorney were present. All information was submitted. The Board of Assessors report from 1949 noting that the studio existed. An email from the building inspector dated March 2012. Property cards indicating, um, that existed, that the studio existed. A letter from the building inspector dated March 29th, 2012. A variance petition from the Byrds dated January 27th, 1988, and some findings of the zoning board of appeals dated 2012. The applicant is dividing the parcel into two lots under the state law 81L, which...
Is that the one that says that it was there before zoning?
I pulled out the A and R handbook, copied the pages that apply for the 81L exemption, and it basically says if two buildings, the division of attractive land on which two or more buildings were standing, when the subdivision control law went into effect, um, lies into two separate lots, on each of which one of such buildings remains standing, shall not constitute a subdivision. So, under this, we had to sign this, sign the A and R.
So, somebody asked for it, and we did it.
Yes, I think that night we had discussed it, because the lawyer was there. We basically said that we needed to do that.
Did that...
We didn't feel like we had much of a choice. I remember Chris abstained from the vote.
Because he was next door.
Right.
That was appropriate.
Right.
But the other thing that they said was, if you don't approve it, it goes in in 20 days.
Right.
You know, it's a, it's a non-standing, whatever.
Right.
Yeah, constructive approval.
Constructive approval.
Did that, uh, property sell?
Apparently.
Both properties sold.
The two different people?
No, 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 to one person. The same one person owns it, and I think they're trying to sell off a second, but...
I don't think they, I thought that the attorney was going to make it so that, because all the attorney and the owner wanted to do was make it so that they could live in both places. There could be separate residences.
Well, that's what they...
But they still wanted them attached together, and I thought they were going to put something in the title that they can't be sold separately. They're still stuck together.
All right, let me finish what's in our minutes, because I didn't remember that, but, uh, under the 81L law, state law, there was discussion as to the nature of the buildings. Their attorney submitted a letter from Copeland Page, which is the town's attorney, dated 2007. Mr. Toomey said there are two existing dwellings. In 1949, it was listed as a studio. There are no, uh, there are no changes proposed. Mr. Thunberg said the board is only endorsing that it is one lot being divided into two, and that it does not require subdivision approval. After further discussion, the board being satisfied, we now have a motion to endorse the plan.
You were there?
I was. And Mr. Rajesh Kumar seconded the motion. All in favor, motion was approved. So, basically...
I thought that was all my mistake.
No, this one wasn't. This is not a mistake, it was done correctly. And it was, I mean, it's done according to the law. We had to do it, because it was an 81L.
Right, and, and, and when I read that, I was like, well, that would be really put up on the owners if there was an issue with utilities, that's...
But I don't even...
So, the utilities as a whole, it had nothing to do with it. We also, in our approval, we signed it, and there was a clear stipulation on the plan that says no determinations made as to the zoning compliance on this lot. So, they're still in violation of the zoning on all that. And in the, in our handbook, I also read one of the standards, was that just by signing an 81L, it doesn't acquire the protected status as a non-conforming structure. So, this was rejected.
Does not, say that again?
I know, it's, I'll, I'll read it, because it's, it kind of goes back and forth.
Because the way it existed for years was not a non-conforming use, because there's two residences on one...
Property.
Property.
Right.
Okay.
So, structures too.
Yes, two structures, yeah, 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 yeah.
Right. But they broke it off into two lots, but under this, Brannigan versus the zoning board of appeals of felony, not 2009, Brannigan argued that a single-family home on a lot created under the 81L exemption retained its status as a pre-existing non-conforming structure. The panel observed nothing in the governing bylaw statutes or appellate decisions supports a conclusion that a dwelling remaining on a lot created under the 81L exemption acquires protected status as a pre-existing non-conforming structure, and rejected Brannigan's argument that the single-family home enjoys protection as a pre-existing non-conforming structure. This decision was issued by the appeals court. Pursuant to some rule.
So, what does that mean?
So, it doesn't... I don't even know why it had anything to do, because the A and R has nothing to do with the structures at all.
Right. But what, it says that it's, it's on a separate lot, so he's allowed to have a habitable dwelling on that separate lot under the zoning, so he, he doesn't have to deal with the non-compliance. But he still has to comply with zoning, because he doesn't, that's, that 81L exemption doesn't carry the non-conforming structure with it, so I don't know...
But the structure can stay.
The struc, right.
That's the only way it could... It's, it's kind of funny, because the only way they can separate the properties is because there's two structures.
Right.
There's two houses that existed before zoning.
Yes.
So, then they say, "All right, you can separate the property," but it sounds like they're saying, as soon as you separate the property, that the two buildings now do not...
Have to need zoning.
They have to need zoning, but the reason you separate it was because they couldn't...
They can't need zoning.
They don't need zoning, because you went through the...
So, I don't really know where they're going.
Where do you want this?
That's, Paul can have that.
So, were you going to speak to them?
I was going to write a response.
Are you going to write a response? Okay.
But that's where I'm coming from, and I want to make sure that my memory is consistent.
So, none of this has to do with separate utilities, that's a whole separate thing, right?
We've never had to do that.
Right, we never had to. I was like, this is on the owners. This is, this was...
No, but I mean, the A and R has never talked about the utilities. The A and R is only...
We're not involved with utilities. What?
We're not involved in that.
We're not involved in zoning or in zoning.
The guy who bought it should have known.
So, who's saying they need separate utilities?
Building.
Building inspector.
The building inspector is, and we think that's correct or not correct?
I don't know. It doesn't really matter to us. That's not our...
It doesn't matter. We don't care.
Ball of wax. We don't...
I don't even think, but if he's claiming it has to happen, I don't think it even has to happen, because there's other properties that have somebody else's water line going across their property.
There's an easement for that.
Yeah, but that. Easement, but I mean, it's.
That can be, but I think what, and I don't really, I actually, I don't know, but I'm assuming that the electric line or some water line goes into the house, and then it goes from the house.
Man, it's one meter, it's one meter for water, one meter for electricity.
So they're going to have to redo it, and he doesn't want to pay for that.
Well, right, why, right.
Yeah.
But he needs to, I mean.
He does?
If he wants to sell it, he.
He does, because why?
If, well, if he wants to sell it. If he wants to sell it off.
Oh, he wants to sell one of the properties.
If it's back there for his kids, then they can buy it up, but if he wants to sell it, then.
That's what I thought.
I wouldn't want to buy a house where my electricity was coming up at somebody else's.
Well, I think that's the problem. He bought the property, thinking he's going to be able to sell off two lots.
It should be okay, I think. It just takes a long for the updates, when you turn that thing off, I don't like to do that. It's okay, now I left it on, we actually could change it.
I think we should, we should suggest, for some reason, I recall that there was something about the properties were separated in as much as there could be two people living there, like they could rent it out, and it could be another house, but the properties had to stay together, because otherwise you're selling, there's going to be a tiny little lot on, on the road, and I don't even think it has a driveway, I think they have a common driveway.
It's a common driveway, yeah.
You know, I, I thought there was something in the attorney's notes or something, he was going to put it into the, uh, title, that they had to stay together.
Then why, then why make two lots out of it?
So that he could legally have his dwelling.
Rent the property out.
Or live there, I mean, or, I think it's like have another kitchen.
He was going to live there and have his kids in the bigger building, but someone.
And people were telling him they couldn't do that, he couldn't get the, uh.
Oh, you couldn't have two, oh, I see.
Two habitable dwellings on a lot.
One could be like an accessory building, but not a dwelling.
Correct.
Okay.
Right, yeah, you could have, I guess, a separate garage or something, I guess, but not a house.
All right, so this certificate looks good. So I will write that letter, I will circulate it, and people can make comments. I'll send the email regarding that.
Okay.
A letter in the air?
For.
The Cheryl Kitty, response to Cheryl Kitty's email. What did you say?
Are we at church? Sorry.
Every time a bell rings, an angel comes.
Nice. You just helped an angel.
Yes.
All right, so we have the, uh, actually, couple of ZB meetings? Paul drafted it. I think that's.
You drafted it.
So, I could sign it first?
Well, you can make sure that it looks right. I think it looked right.
I'm sorry? Oh, see if it's right?
Yeah.
Correct?
The Jake was being on there that I was looking at my.
See if there's any embarrassing smell here.
Except all. So I need to email.
He just must be recording.
We recorded, I think.
Just a voice, but not a video.
No, I think it's on one of those, I think it's on that one.
Oh, it just stays still?
Yeah. They zoom in on you.
He does that.
I think that they need one of these up at, um, in the select ones.
Oh, to look out at the.
Yeah, so when somebody's, when somebody's talking to the board, there's never a good picture of that person, it's like the side of their head, or.
I think it's in the side.
You know, right, because they only have cameras on the side and the back, so they need one here to look at the people that are talking to the board.
Makes sense.
Right.
We don't need any more cameras in this building.
No, we're not.
Did you guys hear any things they were trying to put a camera in the building, like in, uh, hallways, or?
In here?
Yeah, it didn't make any sense to me. I heard something was going on, but I never got word of it.
Like a security camera, or like?
I think a security camera, but I'm not sure.
Because we're all trying to break in at night?
I think it was more related to people not locking the doors at night, so we wanted to have that.
Well, I had a question about that. When I came in the other night, the door was not locked when I left, so what's that about?
What time was it?
I don't remember.
Evening.
Because there's some, one night when the office is open late, the.
Nobody else was here, all the lights are out.
Oh, because I came one night, I came one night.
The donkey.
Donkey was here, and so he left it in.
He'll lock them up, as long as he's here.
Yeah, he always locks it up when he's leaving.
I mean, I didn't know, I didn't even try at first to see if it was locked when I came, and put in the code, got in, and then when I left, I just.
Oh, yeah, you have to lock it back up, so.
And the code does it, and then, yeah.
I think we found the problem.
Okay.
Then Paul Anderson shows up.
Smile for the camera.
I see, I never tried to get in.
Oh, I never knew that.
You have to lock it back up. It locks and then unlocks.
Okay, it's kind of like the code is the key. You can do it, and then you can undo it.
Do it and undo it.
You'd have to type it in backwards, do you?
There you go, we got the camera now, we solved the problem.
Right, right.
Yeah, gotcha.
Get Paul out of here.
Learn something new every day.
All right, that's good.
You wouldn't think that, you would think once you open it, then it's going to lock, but.
You'd think so, yeah. Okay.
I've never had to do it, so.
All right, so we ready to sign that?
I'm ready to sign.
And then we're good to go, I think.
Yeah, I think so.
I just want to ask you a few more questions about the sign thing.
Yeah.
Letter.
See any problems? So we sign this action sheet?
What do we should do with these? Review?
Okay, we've got to sign really soon.
Yeah, we'll review them, but we have until twenty-something, so we'll talk about them at our next meeting.
Don't they want more notice?
Then give it to us sooner.
Oh, when do they get it?[1704.98]